Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Yes, I can. I can hear you.
How are you doing? Jim Herbert, how are you doing?
Good, Jim. Welcome.
Yes, thank you very much for the invite. I'm sure we're going to find it interesting. Are you expecting a lot of people to come in on the Zoom?
We're not sure yet, to be honest with you. We have all of council and the required staff from both the City of St. Thomas as well as Central Oregon. And then I believe there's a number of residents that will be attending as well.
Okay, should be interesting. The last Zoom we had for the public, we had 155 people wanted to ask questions in an hour period. There was a challenge for the mayor, but he did really well on it. So it's not easy. Everybody wants to talk for 10 minutes.
Yep, that's the case.
Yep, but he laid down some ground rules and stuck to it. And it was, I thought he did a nice job.
Great, great.
So I'll unmute myself now, just so. So I'll mute myself now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, that's not going to work.
You're standing on your head. There you go. You're better now.
I'll stand on my head for you anytime, Councilor Herbert.
Well, you may need to.
Okay, I got one computer to work. This will be the one.
I had to get mine sorted around with Maria because something happened when I accepted for Lloyd's invite. I lost the Zoom link, but anyway, it's good now. Thank you. Maria, I made it. Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
Maria, it's Gary Clark. Can you see me?
No, I think you have to switch it to video.
Okay. Start video, you mean?
Sure.
Yes.
You're there, Gary.
All right, I gotta switch the camera around. There I am.
Okay, could you turn it back off?
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
That's our mayor speaking. Hello, John.
Hello, Jim.
You got that nice Lake Margaret background. What a fish.
That's so you can't see my messy kitchen.
Lloyd, Counselor Tinlin won't be attending tonight, so you don't need to worry about his name.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Counselor Cook, I see that you've called in on your cell phone. I cannot promote you to panelist if you call in. Is there a way that you can come in through the Zoom link using your computer?
We have been unmuted in the main room, so I just want to welcome all of St. Thomas. We're just having a few glitches getting some of our members on. And I finally got the screen, Joe, so I can see you top center.
Yeah, there you are. Yeah.
We may be in shadows because I had to have dim the light so I could see the screen.
I'm in a very bright room. There we go.
We have all of St. Thomas Council except Counselor Tinlin, correct?
We should have them all, yes.
Okay. We're just trying to make sure. We have one who's on the phone and trying to get in.
Your worship, I don't see Wookiee yet. Is he in?
I don't.
Email from Counselor Wookiee is trying to get on, so I'm just emailing him.
We'll wait till everybody gets in.
Run a wire over to his house. Yes.
We're still waiting for poor Brian Lima here who's trying to get the air conditioning on in here because somebody turned it off today. So this is not exactly a pleasant room tonight. Yeah, I'm going to be red shaded with the window behind me, aren't I, without the lights on? Okay, I can just see the three flags, so I know I'm there. I'm sitting in front of three flags, so that maybe all you can see is a shadow. Is it? Okay.
You're pretty clear from the camera. Yeah, actually, you're quite clear.
Well, that's good. It's harder for me to see and hear. We've been doing this for a little bit, and I know Whit does a great job with these cameras. All our Plexiglas shields and. We're still waiting for Counselor Cook and Counselor Wookiee.
Is Bill?
Is Counselor Farron?
No, I don't see Bill there either.
Oh.
No.
Yeah, because you can't see everybody.
And I don't have any control. I don't see it, right? Unlike you guys.
Right. And we can't turn this on to see it, or we get the reverberation in the room, because otherwise I could have turned this on, and then I'd know. But I didn't even bring my earbuds, so I can't turn it on. Mr. Perrin, can you hear me?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can hear you. Just maybe a clarification for those in attendance. Council members from the City of St. Thomas and Central Oregon, as well as staff, have a status in this meeting as panelist, as well as the representative from the company that's growing the cannabis on the airport lands. The other people that have joined have a status as attendees. So in the way that the process will work, if they raise their hand utilizing the software, and Mayor Martin will speak to how that can happen, then you'll be recognized to ask your question.
Are you in the meeting or no?
Mr. Perrin, do we have Counselor Farr on yet?
I have admitted Counselor Farr. I do not see him.
Okay, we only see so many on this screen, so we can't scroll across, because if we turn it on, we're going to get reverberations in here. Whit's got everybody on the screen that's in. Mr. Perrin, you can tell me when we're ready to go then, if you would.
At your pleasure, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, then I will call this meeting to order and welcome everybody from the City of St. Thomas, both staff and council and the mayor, and all of our own council members here. We have four of us in person here, and the other three are online. Just so you know, if you are confused, I will be speaking, I'll be requesting comments from Counselor Winn. She was previously Counselor Roberts, but she is now Counselor Winn. So just in case you're confused, that's our Ward Five Belmont and North Yarmouth area counselor. And so I'm going to just start with, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof from any of the participants? Seeing and hearing none. We've called this meeting to, because of the concerns expressed in the letter, expressed concerning the cannabis grow operation at the St. Thomas Municipal Lands. And we understand that the head of that is Zubin Jazavala is going to, is here, present, the Mira Chief Executive Officer. And he will answer questions that are directed through myself or Mayor Preston. And Lloyd Perrin is going to be, he has, he's the host, and he's the one who's going to tell us when someone wants to speak or ask a question. And then either myself or Mayor Preston will acknowledge that person and let them speak, depending if they, like if they specifically, if they don't specifically say who they want, whether they're addressing it to me or to who, I'll just automatically let them speak unless they specifically ask for Mayor Preston. So it'll make it easier than trying to figure out who should be granting them the right to speak. So, Mr. Perrin, do we have someone to ask the first question?
I see no hands at this point, Madam Mayor. Maybe if you could go over the instructions on how to raise their hand. We have Counselor Cook that is on by cellphone, and I can't promote her to panelist, but then there's one other caller on phone. And then there's four other individuals that are signed in utilizing the app.
Okay, those of you on the app, what you have to do, if you, depending on whether you have a computer or an iPad, an iPad, it's at the bottom of the screen, and a computer, it's at the top. If you move up there, you'll see a little hand logo. If you click on that hand, that will tell Mr. Perrin that you wish to speak and ask a question. If you're on the phone, star nine, star nine is what you push, and that will signal to Mr. Perrin that you wish to ask a question. He will then acknowledge who you are and tell me who's the first person to speak or to ask a question. The one thing I'd ask, it doesn't sound like there are a lot of you yet, but if we are, when we're asking questions, I don't want to have the same question asked by several different people. If you ask the question, we want to give you the full answer. If you need more clarification, that's fine. That's not a problem. It's just I don't want to have the exact same questions or comments made over and over again. We want to expedite the meeting as well as possible while answering everyone's questions. Is there anyone with a question, Mr. Perrin?
Madam Mayor, Michelle Harris, and I'm going to allow her to address the councils.
Thank you, Michelle. Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself?
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I did hit unmute earlier. I just wanted to share that we have quite a large number of neighbors that clicked on the link, and they are not in the same Zoom meeting that we are in. So there are significant challenges. I'm getting a lot of phone calls here. So what I had to do is copy and paste the link, so we're trying to get that communication out. But I feel concerned that not everyone's going to have an opportunity to ask their questions, so I wanted to bring that forward. We did want to say thank you to everyone for the meeting. But we did also want to just share that we were expecting Mira to do a presentation today, and then we would have an opportunity to have questions and answers after that. So we're feeling a little bit unprepared from that perspective, so I just wanted to share that. I probably have more questions with my husband, Steve, who just stepped away to take a phone call from another neighbor or so. One of the first questions that we have is just seeking clarification as to who is the producer? Is the producer Mira Cannabis, or is the producer Countryside Cannabis?
Would someone from the city, or would the Mira Chief Executive Officer wish to speak to that?
Zubin, did you want to just clarify whether it's Countryside or Mira?
Yeah, sure. So the licensed producer is Countryside Cannabis Corp. Countryside Cannabis Corp., 50% of the ownership is through Mira Cannabis Corp. Mira is a licensed producer within the City of St. Thomas, and so there is a 50% ownership of the Countryside Cannabis Project as well.
Thank you. Michelle, that answers that question now. Could you, once we know others are getting on, maybe Mr. Perrin will know as others get in. So we certainly will give a chance for everyone to get in. We're sorry about the glitches.
Yeah, there's about a half a dozen that are trying to get in still, so. Which would be the ones that had signed the letter, original letter. So anyway, if you're comfortable with myself proceeding until others raise their hand, is that an okay approach?
Just to hang on just a moment, Mrs. Wilson?
Mayor Martin, I just want to be clear with everyone in the public. There are two meetings happening tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that people are trying to get into the right meeting, because there is this meeting with jointly with the city, and then there is another meeting posted on our website which has another link. So I just want to be, I'm just hoping that they're trying to get into the correct meeting.
Yes, this meeting is our joint one with St. Thomas. After we do the cannabis part, we have other issues to talk about together. And then Central Oregon itself have a few items that we have to clarify as well. So we're having a separate meeting for that one. So it may be, Michelle, that they're clicking into the wrong meeting.
I'm just going to take a moment to send an email to the group, okay?
Certainly. Zubin, there's one question that I could ask that I know some of them have been concerned about, and that was with the well impact study that you had done. Because the original letter, when it was sent, we had been told, or in the letter, it said that you were going to truck water in this year and not use a well. So maybe you could clarify that for the group as well.
Sure, thank you. Just so you're aware, Mayor Martin, my background is as an accountant, and I have very little experience in farming. And a lot of the initial plans around this project were driven by myself and my partner, Dr. So Young Lee, who has a PhD in pharmaceutical sciences. So this project was quite novel for both of us. Our initial plan did not obviously work out the way we had actually executed the project. And a lot of that was driven by involvement of local farmers. And one of the local farmers who has been helping us through the season had directed us, and they had been farming that property prior. And it instructed us to look into utilizing the well on site, at which point we had contacted John Wilson from JB Wells or JB Drilling, and brought him on site to drill one well, which was in the original contract with the city and is currently now in place. We did make a mistake, and I want to take full ownership for that. With John on site, we had discussed around redundancy with drilling multiple wells, and I'd spoken with the City of St. Thomas about that. The city had instructed us to receive permission and a well study prior to that drilling. And unfortunately, there was miscommunication within our team that instructed John to go ahead with his team to drill a second well. As everyone's aware, there was a lot of concern from local residents around that, and we stopped all drilling. John Wilson, we had asked him to leave the site, and we ended up conducting a study of the existing well prior to utilizing it. And we ended up utilizing a local resident to truck water in for that period of time. The well study has been conducted and has been finalized. The one well that we do intend to utilize has a circle of influence of about 17.3 meters. The closest well to the site is 465 meters away. And so based on our utilization of that well, it was determined that there would be no negative influence on the aquifer or on neighboring wells. And as a result of the weather that we've had over the last couple of weeks, we haven't had a need to utilize supplemental water. And so it's there more as a backup, and was really important in the initial couple of weeks during the heat and drought when the seedlings were first put into the ground.
Could you tell us when the seedlings were first put into the ground? That'll help probably too, because there were a lot of confusion over that.
Of course. We received our license from Health Canada on June 15th, I believe, and the plant started going into the ground around June 25th or so. I believe it was the last week of June that most of the plants were put into the ground, and that continued until about two weeks ago. All of the planting on site is now completed, and the plants are just, you know, in their regular growth cycle.
Yeah, how long do they have to grow before you can harvest them? I'm just curious with such late planting.
So the plants are completely dependent on the light cycle changes. And so typically, the harvest period is somewhere between the middle of September and late October. You generally have to harvest the plants before the first frost arrives. So that's late October generally in this area.
Used to be before Thanksgiving, but climate change is making a difference. How many acres of land have you planted?
I believe it's somewhere around 55 acres has been planted, and it's about 25 acres where the plants were planted earlier in the season, and they've had the chance to really do well.
Okay, thank you. I'm just asking a few questions, so hopefully we get everyone on.
Of course.
That gives some clarification to those who are listening, who can relay it. Michelle, did you have more you wish to ask? Michelle, did you have more you wish to ask?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I didn't know if I was still live or not. So I apologize. I did miss a little bit about the information from the wells. I caught part of that while I was trying to send some communication to the neighbors. And so there was two wells drilled, but there's one in use at present. And you've done a study on one of those wells.
Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
And you have no intention of using the other well, is that correct?
That is correct as well.
How can we be assured of that? Because there is two wells drilled, and that is very concerning. It's against the agreement that's in place, from my understanding of a letter from Mr. Graves in May of 2020, that there was an agreement for one well. It's confusing to us to try to understand how two wells have been drilled. You gave a bit of an explanation, but it's not comforting to the neighbors to learn that there's two wells in place. And we know that irrigation is a big piece of cannabis growth outdoor operations. So we want some assurance in regards to that piece.
Subin, can you speak to that?
Sure. So the second well is located at the rear of the property. The well has been dug, but it's not operational. And to be honest, I have very little experience in terms of the function of these wells. And so I would be happy to take any recommendations from the city on how we can manage and ensure all residents that that second well is not in use. To address the other comment about utilization of water, the utilization of water for cannabis, and I had mentioned this a bit earlier, is essential during the planting, before the plants harden off and get established within the soil. Since we've received approval to utilize the one well that's currently on site, we actually haven't utilized even a liter of water from the well. So the expectation is that there is very little water consumption. It was a trial period this year. We wanted to understand how the plants would cope without water, with water, within the current soil, which is a bit of a clayish mix, some parts with sand, but it seems to be retaining the moisture quite well. And so supplemental water is likely not to be a major factor in the success of this operation.
Michelle, did you get that? Sorry, Michelle, earlier he had said that they trucked in water to start with, when the early planting first took place.
Yes, I did hear that. Thank you. The other piece about the water, unless others have raised their hand for questions?
I'll let you finish, Michelle, and then we'll ask Lloyd to let someone else or announce someone else.
So when we had a meeting with Honorable Jeff Urick to discuss our concerns, there was some information that we received from him that 50,000 liters of water per day would be the maximum. I see in the well impact study that it's mentioning 45,000 liters per day would be the maximum. But through that conversation with Mr. Urick, we did learn that every liter or drop of water needs to be accounted for every single day. So can you tell us about that process from your perspective, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Subin.
Yes, so we are maintaining a water log on site. We have one type of water container, which is a 10,000 gallon trailer, water trailer that we're utilizing. We make the assumption that any time that truck is going to go up to the well, that we record it as a 10,000 gallon fill. In that way, we're able to manually track how much water we've utilized. And even during the peak consumption for us, we were sitting at about 20,000 liters per day.
Thank you. Mr. Perrin, is there anyone else waiting to speak?
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Counselor Herbert.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the well. I'd like to know how deep each one is. And if you're trucking water in, then it better be on a clay well, because if it's in a sand well, the water just sinks right down in. So how deep are the wells? Like, how deep did you have to go down?
I am just looking at the report right now.
While you're looking for it, I understand there's a big vein of water that goes from south of St. Thomas down to Elmer, right down into Tilsonburg. Is that the water where the water comes from? Is that the big vein you're digging into, drilling into?
I can't answer that second question. The depth of the well is 25 meters. I believe it was 82 feet.
Is that both of them?
That's the well that we're currently utilizing at the front of the property.
Okay. And you decided not to truck it in anymore? Is that because you're in the sand?
No, we decided not to truck it in because of the progression of the plants and the fact that that first wall was approved for use. So we could transfer from utilizing purchased water to the well from the property.
And Mr. Herbert, or Counselor Herbert, sorry. I think when they truck the water in, what they do is water the plants directly. They're not putting that water in the well.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It was sitting in a tractor trailer that was then being used to fill our water containers.
Okay, thank you.
Next person, Mr. Perrin.
Madam Mayor, I have Corey Sullivan, followed by Michelle Harris.
Okay, Corey Sullivan, it's your chance to ask questions.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I mean, a lot of my questions have to do with the water and obviously the runoff. I mean, we have some concerns, and I know you talked and touched briefly on drilling the well and then drilling a second well by mistake or whatever. But to me, I mean, that's a huge mistake, and I need some reassurance. I mean, I can't just trust that what people are going to say is the way it's going to be because of how this whole project got underway. We were told and informed that it was only going to be one well, and they were going to be, my understanding is they were going to be the existing well that was on site. But there seems to be a lot of changes that have been made without following guidelines and having input from us. And also, my other concern is basically the amount of water that's going onto the land, and it's going to be going into the waterway. There's a creek that runs through there too, so. Has there been any questions or concerns about doing a study for that impact?
Go ahead, Mr. Subin, please.
So thanks for the questions, Corey. I understand the concern with regards to the second well. And as I said with the previous question, I'm willing to, you know, put a lock on it and give the key to the city. If there's any other type of monitoring that would be desired, we're more than happy to do so, because there's really no need for us to utilize that well. And so, you know, I will wait to hear back. I mean, if there's any suggestions right now on this call, I'm happy to take note, and we can follow up with that right away. In regard to the second question, you know, the amount of water that is being put on site is the exact same amount of water that's being put on every other property in the region. We're utilizing rainwater right now. The rainwater is providing all of the moisture requirements the plants need, and the nutrients, the pesticides, the herbicides that we are restricted to using are far less than any surrounding farm or property in the region. And that's dictated by Health Canada and Environment Canada based off of the use of cannabis and the possibility of combustion. As a result, I believe there is zero impact on, or zero negative impact on surrounding properties and waterways. And in fact, there are some studies that point to cannabis actually removing contaminants from soil and being used in areas where there have been natural disasters in order to remove contaminants and radioactive materials from the soil. Now, I don't think that's the case on the property we're working on, but I don't believe that there's a negative impact that would be seen by any surrounding residents from the plants.
Okay, well, I guess maybe sometimes some of the information that we receive is not, maybe not as accurate as we had hoped. But my understanding is that when it comes to fertilizing cannabis, that it is a substantial amount more fertilizer than would be required on, let's say, just a field, field of corn.
I think it's really a misconception more than anything else. Most cannabis plants, being annuals, can generally pass through its entire life cycle without any external nutrient supplementation, just from conducting soil tests independently on each acre of the property through A&amp;L labs prior to the season commencing. It was very clear that there was a very high salt concentration across the entire field historically from farming. And that's nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, calcium, a lot of the nutrients that are required for cannabis. And as a result, you know, a lot of the nutrient feed that the plants are receiving are from previous season farm use. So there is a need to fertilize the plants, but it is no different from corn or soybean or any other plants that are grown for agricultural purposes. There's not a higher nutrient requirement. And from what we've seen, there's a fairly low water requirement as well.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, the next question is from Michelle Harris.
Thank you. Go ahead, Michelle. We just had a complete blackout here for about two minutes, so we lost the screen. We lost everything, but we're all back now, so.
Okay, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes?
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. I wanted to have some conversation on behalf of the group in regards to odor concerns. Last year in 2019, we did notice, and quite a number of residents noticed that there was an odor, but weren't traveling up and down Elm line. So we were not aware that there was 25 acres of hemp being grown until well after the fact, when we learned that cannabis was being grown, and we started to call neighbors around the area. Certainly, some of the feedback that we received, and I know my husband Steve and I, we were bothered by the odor. There was evenings and mornings where we were like, wow, there must be a lot of skunks in the neighborhood. And we just couldn't be outside, and we had similar feedback from a number of other neighbors. And that was 25 acres of hemp. And so the lease agreement is for 100 acres of cannabis. And through research that we have done, cannabis will be more intensive in odor than the hemp. And certainly, it's closer to the number of properties of concern. So everybody is quite concerned about the odor. We know that it's probably going to start when the plant starts to flower, and it will intensify until it's harvested. So there's a lot of concern in that regard about being able to have outside time to work, to play, to relax, to have barbecues. There are a number of residents in the area that have significant health concerns that they're on oxygen therapy 24/7, and they're worried about being able to be outside and enjoy that outside time. Some of the research that we've done indicates that headaches and nausea and other physical complaints will be happening. So we wanted to have some discussion around that and a potential air quality assessment, as well as through the research that we've done, there's supposed to be a quality assurance person that is available for complaints. So we wanted to have the contact information for that individual for when these odor concerns do happen.
Thank you, Michelle. Subin, can you speak to those issues, please?
Sure, thank you for the question. Odor is obviously one of the big concerns across Canada, as this is one of the first seasons that outdoor cannabis cultivation has been permitted. When it comes to the regulations on indoor and greenhouse cannabis use or production, Health Canada is quite strict in terms of odor control and odor measures. If you were to drive by our site on Sparling Road, I assure you, you would not smell any cannabis scent or odor. Health Canada, and this is along with, and I'm just... Sorry, Public Health Ontario, have conducted research on this matter and have looked into whether or not there are any harmful effects from cannabis production. And oftentimes, there is, you know, a confusion between the smell of cannabis plants and cannabis being consumed. Since legalization, the consumption of cannabis is legal. That has sent, you know, some residents and neighbors into concern as a result of, you know, people consuming at their homes legally. And similarly, there's concerns around odor from the production of cannabis outdoors. When we look at the actual effects and the scientific literature around effects like asthma, allergies, et cetera, there is really no difference between cannabis and every other crop within nature. Even the scents that we're referring to, they are produced through terpenes within the plant. These are naturally occurring molecules that you'll find contained in soybeans, cucumber, pine trees, lemon, citrus fruit. The concoction or formula that these plants produce it in is unique, and that's one of the medical benefits of cannabis. Is there an odor from cannabis? There absolutely is. Is it any more or less palatable than a chicken or pig farm or the production of any other plant with odors? It's completely subjective. We know, and you know, the conclusion from Public Health Ontario is that there is no medical harm or health effects from the production of cannabis, that a lot of the concerns are generally due to association with the unpleasant odors around the consumption of cannabis. And Health Canada has determined it not to be a public health risk. And as a result, the requirements around odor control do not exist for outdoor cannabis cultivation.
So nausea and headaches are not a concern for your company, the producer?
Yes, actually.
A significant impact to those of us that are enjoying a country living with the odd odor of somebody spreading manure, and the farmer takes great consideration to look at the wind and other factors before making that decision. Whereas cannabis is going to linger. It's not going to be gone in a day after, or a day or two after manure is being spread, those types of things. And I did work on a chicken farm and lived next to a chicken farm for quite a long time, so I'm quite familiar with that.
So we are concerned about any negative impact on the community, and particularly our neighbors. Nobody has ever grown 100 acres of cannabis outdoors before. Um, nobody has ever grown 100 acres of cannabis outdoors before. Um, and as I said earlier in the call, we're we're not growing 100 acres this year. We're we're closer to half of that. Um, and so it's really hard to say how the 50 acres will smell in comparison to the 25 acres of hemp. Um, y- there's also a a misconception around hemp and cannabis. They're the exact same plant. The only difference is one cannabinoid in hemp must be below a certain arbitrary threshold. Otherwise, they're very, very similar plants. Um, in fact, you know, nausea, vomiting, um i- is actually a medical condition that we use cannabis to treat. Um, and and one of the reasons that we've gotten into this business and industry uh is particularly to help medical patients, and that's a focus for our parent company, Mara Cannabis. Um, and a lot of the product that we're producing will go to assist people with those conditions and with those um symptoms. Um, in relation to the quality assurance person, that is a requirement under the Cannabis Act for a facility with a processing license or a sales license. It is not a requirement for a pro uh production license only. Um, and so formally, we do not have a quality assurance person. Um, and that's purely a regulatory matter. Um, that Health Canada has determined is not required for a production license. With that said, our responsible person in charge for countryside cannabis is Dr. So Young Lee. Um, she is our quality assurance person and chief scientific officer for Mara, uh the parent company. Um, in addition to that, she's on site on a daily basis uh and conducts herself in a way a quality assurance person would at any other cannabis site. Um, her contact information uh can be received, um, and I I can provide that to you. Um, but as I said, there are no regulatory requirements or compliance matters with regard to cannabis odors for outdoor production sites.
That would be great if you could share her contact information. We would appreciate that. Uh, so she's on site at at uh the St. Thomas Airport property daily, you said?
Yeah, we both of us um have been splitting our time between our facility in St. Thomas and the airport site.
I'm curious to know which whether it was yourself or the quality assurance person that was on site the day the second well well was being drilled.
Um, I was on site um in the morning. Um, I could not tell you um So Young's schedule at at the current time. Um, just keep in mind, though, it was 100 acres. Um, we have approximately uh 12 to 15 uh employees from the area on site. There were contractors on site, so I think the chances of her being uh present during that discussion was fairly slim. Um.
One question I would ask you in in a follow-up uh Zubin to that would be um wh- when would the odor likely, is it likely, it is it when it blooms or when would you anticipate odor from the current planting?
So there is already an odor from the plants. Um, all of, you know, and just, you know, to keep in mind, the odor from the plants is not an unpleasant odor. Um, anyone from the city of St. Thomas who has been on site, I I don't think would agree that there's an unpleasant odor that's uh, you know, coming from the plants. Uh, although the terpenes are generally contained within the trichomes which develop during flowering. And so over the coming weeks, you're likely to have a stronger odor from those plants. Um, and that odor is generally there until you harvest. So you're likely looking at about a two-month window where there is a noticeable odor um coming from the plants. And when I say noticeable, I mean um when you're s- surrounded by them. I I am unaware of how far the scent will travel, how sensitive other people's receptors are. Um, that is yet to be determined.
Michelle, that's something you might speak to. Have you or any of your neighbors been noticing that smell yet this year?
Um, I've received email communication from one family on Quaker Quaker Road.
Okay, thank you.
Of two situations.
Is there another person waiting to ask a question, Mr. Perrin?
Uh, Madam Mayor, the uh the next one is Mary Ann. If you could maybe just give her full name.
Mary Ann, if you could give your full name and it's your turn to speak.
It's Mary Ann Irvine, and um I live on Talbot Line and just to speak on the fact that the smell, I have smelled it and my husband smelled it and um our neighbors have already smelled the smell. We're on the north side of the airport that we've already started to smell it. Um, my question is, what is the strain of your cannabis? What's the name of it?
Go ahead, Zubin.
This might take me about two hours. We have we have about 180 varieties of cannabis on the property to experiment, to to understand what both of ours are going to work in this climate and in this environment and soil conditions. Um, so they vary from high terpene content strains, high CBD content, high THC content, high CBG content, and every mix in between. Um, so generally, if you're looking to say is strain, I I'm embarrassed to use any of the uh gray market strain names on this call, but if you were to ask, do we have X strain, the chances are we likely do have it on site.
Okay, I, the reason I asked that question was because we're hoping to get some I've also done research on the fact of the smell and when it starts, and it also says there is some lower strains of um cannabis that we won't get such a definite odor, but uh it sounds like you've got more than one, so we it it is definitely starting, you know, at three at six weeks, we've already started to smell it, so it's, you know, we've lived there for 30 years. Yes, we have farmers nearby. We deal with dairy farms and manure. We have a field behind us and everything as well. It's just very unfortunate that now, after all these years and not knowing in the city giving the proper information going forward and not giving us a chance to raise our concerns about what is going on. It's just, it's very difficult now for us, what Michelle said earlier, that we have faith and trust and that what you're going to say, that what you're gonna do is gonna be proper, exactly about um taking as much water as you are planned to do, you know. How are we supposed to build any trust when right from the beginning there never was? So that's just my comment on that. Um, I'm hopefully going forward. Um, I would like to know how long, how many years you plan on leasing that property? If that's available information.
Of course. Thanks, Mary Ann. Um, I I'm really sorry that you feel this way, and I I have no intention of making anyone feel uncomfortable in their own homes or feeling like they're being enveloped among the smell of skunk and cannabis. And I I truly hope that that's not the case and doesn't impact you in in that way. Um, we, we have heard that there are certain strains of cannabis that don't uh, don't have an odor. I have just never in in my career, in my life, actually seen it. Um, and while there are strains that certainly have a more pungent odor, um, all of that is uncertain in an outdoor environment versus indoor. A lot of the uh terpene development uh and production is driven by the spectrum of light that the plant receives. And so understanding that this year um ahead of the harvest season is very uncertain. Um, wi- with that in mind, um, just so everyone knows, I'm I'm also a neighbor of the property. I live about a kilometer away from the site. Um, probably, probably closer to two kilometers away. Um, and I'm, I want to make sure that this is not a a negative impact on anyone in the surrounding community. Um, it 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 hurts me, and I I've revealed this to um the city of St. Thomas. It it's hard to hear that uh the trust with the city has been broken. Um, we've had a relationship with the city of St. Thomas since uh late 2013, uh early 2014, when we first started this project. Uh, when So Young and myself came to uh St. Thomas and purchased our property. Um, and we've had a very positive and fruitful relationship. Um, we have, you know, two sites licensed, a third on the way. Uh, we are now employing uh close to 45 people in the area. Um, and we expect that to continue to grow. Um, and so you know, I'm hopeful that over time, the residents start to see and understand that as opposed to wanting us out sooner, that you would want us around for the long term. Um, and you know, I've built this business and started it with the intention that this is gonna be a business that's here to stay. Uh, we selected Central Algen and St. Thomas as our um like kind of home base, even though myself and So Young come from the Greater Toronto Area. Uh, and we intend to run our business for the rest of our lives, so I I have no intention of leaving. Um, I I really want this to work, and I want it to work for all of the residents of Central Algen and St. Thomas as well. Um, and and in any way that I can, I can work towards that and and help with this transition and and understanding and education, I'm I'm here to do that.
Okay, it it's great to hear, but again, I just have to go sorry, um, I have to go back to the fact that, you know, at the very beginning you said um that you're new at this, um, and excuse you for um s- some of the issues going forward. But again, you know, you should have went in there knowing the rules. Everybody else has to have rules. When you got building permits, you got this permit, you have this permit. And then when you see someone not following the rules, giving us misinformation, it's very difficult to put trust back into that person, so um hopefully, the smell is not a great impact, and I hope for the residents the well issue and the water won't be an impact as well, but uh thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Perrin?
Madam Mayor, we have Steve Harris next.
Steve, go ahead.
I am wondering if there's going to be any ancillary activities, drying, trimming, milling, et cetera, taking place on the property.
Zubin?
No, there is only a cultivation license. Um, and so there may be um some storage on site, which would be in refrigerated trucks. Uh, there will be no drying, there'll be no trimming, and no processing of cannabis on site.
Is that, is that just for this year?
Uh, yeah, so as of right now, that is the plan. If we decide to move ahead with a construction project uh to put a larger facility on site, uh those plans have not been determined yet, but as of right now, the plan is to utilize our property on Sparling Road and on Harwell Road.
Okay, thanks.
Perrin?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Corey Sullivan?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Corey Sullivan?
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, um, so that last conversation with uh Steve uh just kind of raised a concern uh for me. Um, so when you talk about future development and the possibility of construction on that site, um, I mean, for the people that live in this area, this is gonna have a a big impact on our our homes, our property value, and you know, frankly, our retirement, because uh some of us have these homes and you know, we're investing a lot of time and energy into paying for these properties, and maybe it's part of our retirement package. If this uh, in the future, you build a uh a facility to process this cannabis, this will definitely negatively impact our property values. Are you willing to pay for our properties at above-market value if this happens? We do not want to be living around a industrial area with a cannabis processing plant in our backyard.
Obviously, um, even before Zubin speaks, that that would be the city of St. Thomas, et cetera, and and Central Algen. There would have to be building permits and all kinds of things that would happen before uh any uh specific um use of that land such as that. It's zoned agricultural at the moment and um except for the airport part. Um, so that that would be a real process in which I believe there would be public meetings, et cetera, if that were to change.
Yes, and I I realize that, and I realize there's I realize.
Mr. Leach did tell me that whole block is zoned industrial. Designated industrial. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so I mean, even even with that being said, I mean, there is just an application process and meetings to change zoning. Um, but that, I mean, that's a huge concern for us. I mean, it's one thing when we're sitting around this round table and we're talking about, you know, crops, agricultural tr- crops and and smells and odors and impact on you know, waterways, but when we're starting to talk about um infrastructure, that changes things again. You know, so that's a real concern for me, and I mean, I'm I'm I apologize, but this gets me excited and not in a good way.
Zubin, if you'd like to respond, if there's any response you have to that?
Sure. Um, well, I I certainly regret bringing up that that comment in the in the previous uh question. Um, Corey, to address the question, there is no intention or plan on turning it into an industrial uh area. Uh, we have a 90,000 square foot building uh in St. Thomas that hasn't even started, that will be used for processing. Um, and so, you know, I don't think that that is something that we need to worry about. Uh, and as Mayor Martin mentioned, uh, that would have to go through a formal uh process uh which would give everyone the opportunity to chime in at the time.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I apologize about uh, you know, when you hear that kind of thing, you get excited.
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. Perrin?
Madam Mayor, uh, Michelle Harris.
Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Corey, you you addressed the one question I was gonna ask around property value, because that is a huge concern. Um, and my husband's family has lived in this very property since 1863. We have no intentions of of needing, wanting to move or to lose the value of our property. We've certainly invested. Uh, each family that's been in this household has invested time, energy, and dollars, and uh we're certainly not looking forward to um any situation that you've just described. But that is a huge concern for us. Are you able to share the name of their countryside cannabis producer? You said it's the local farmer. Are you able to share that name with us? You shared your, the the mere cannabis piece.
Um, the farmer is a subcontractor, so I would like to obtain their permission before sharing.
Yes, well, we look forward to your response on that question. Uh, we also, uh, our group is very interested in obtaining a copy of the lease agreement. We have looked at the bylaws for the city of St. Thomas, so uh we will be pursuing that informally uh through the process as outlined in the bylaw uh for that process, but uh as uh Mary Ann and Corey and others have stated, certainly, there's a a a high degree of lack of trust in the entire process uh since day one, and uh so having a look at that cop and having a copy of that lease agreement is gonna be very important to us.
Thank you. Tom Marks, Deputy Mayor Marks would like to speak.
If we could revisit the water, um the old farmer in me is coming out. You said that you've got adequate water now from rain, and you just planted seedlings. As those seedlings grow, you get a lot of water, the they're gonna take a lot more water. I think the neighbors deserve to know the quality and quantity of their water. the quality and quantity of their water is safe we had urged you to benchmark those wells so if they do go dry or have problems with quality there'd be something to benchmark against that has not happened are you willing to guarantee those neighbors the quality and the quantity of their water in writing?
I would be more than happy to guarantee in writing the quantity of water that we've taken um in terms of understanding the quality is the quality in relation to the runoff from cannabis i- is that the concern?
If the neighbors' wells go bad and it's caused by you using too much water or runoff are you going to replace those wells? I think that's a reassurance they need to hear
Yes, of course and you know I'm not a hydrogeologist but the one that we engaged so the hydrogeologist that we have engaged had indicated that the circle of influence from the well provided we take forty-five thousand liters per day would be seventeen point three meters which is less than five percent of the distance to the closest well which is four hundred and sixty-five meters away so in terms of if quality you mean quantity of what's remaining for them to utilize I will sign off uh and I'm confident that it will not impact the quantity of water uh that they have available
Just just so you're aware Zubin, I'm a rural person on a farm with a well as well and and I know that if you use uh if you give pump your well too low you will get sometimes adverse uh things coming in with the water and that that would be that's probably what Deputy Mayor Marx is concerned about as well and not just runoff but if you pump a well too low you sometimes will get poor water um that wouldn't pass the health unit test so uh that would be a concern for these people as well I'm sure because all the underground aquifers you only go that far with each pumping but depends on how often you pump how how far out the the aquifer would be uh influenced I'm sorry, uh Councilor Krevitz would like to speak as well
Just following up on the water question why was municipal water never looked at since it does run in front of the airport property? Would that not have been an adequate source and a better water source for your production rather than drilling into the aquifer?
I I believe that would have been a ideal solution for us um I and I I can't recall the issue I think there was the need to run a separate water line down to Elm Line in order to access that property um but I I don't hold me to that I I can't recall exactly
Mayor Martin, if I I may speak, I was under the impression that um that there was a potentially an issue with the amount of chlorine that uh would have been in the line at that particular uh place
Okay, maybe Mr. Perrin uh do you know anything about this or not?
Uh through you, uh Madam Mayor, the the issue could have been uh when the water was not being taken that the chlorine residual within the line would have been diminished given that it was sitting in it for a long period of time when agricultural crops are being grown and water is being taken there's a steady turnover in the line but uh that's not all year round so it would then become a minute a a line extension would be a municipal system and then that would uh create an issue with respect to water turnover and chlorine residuals in that line when water was not being taken
Actually, for the growing of crops probably the lower the chlorine residual the better but it's certainly as you say municipally we would have to make sure it had the right residual
Madam Mayor, maybe a a question uh to Zubin uh the irrigation that you're utilizing for the crop is it um you know farmers are moving towards uh like drip irrigation what type of irrigation are you using is it like a a rotary gun uh taking water and broadcasting it over or are the plants planted through uh plastic like many of the vegetable crops we see here with uh drip irrigation incorporated into the plastic?
So we've um we've contacted I believe the name is Vanderbusch which is a local irrigation company and so they've uh come to talk with us about different irrigation methods uh the broad um I I can't I I'm not sure what waters but the broad uh water application with the uh large sprayers generally requires a reservoir or pond and I think there's a challenge of that being on the airport property um when it comes to the irrigation lines if we wanted to run the entire uh property all at the same time it would require a significant uh amount which is is not actually required for the plant health and so what we're actually doing is selectively watering plant-specific only in areas that require it um and it's driving with a tractor and directly applying it to where the plant is it's a very manual system
That Mr. Perrin made a good suggestion though because a lot of the if you go into this eventually the the drip irrigation uses far less water than even the system you're using for all the plants and it keeps the soil at a level that is uh you know it's not too wet it's just ideal for
Madam Mayor, I still have uh Michelle Harris's hand up I'm not sure if she still has another question and then uh Joey and Sheri Laduke
Okay, Michelle and then the Ladukes
Hi, can you hear me still okay?
Yes
Okay, I'm just going back to the property value question uh from our perspective we're not uh confident that that question was properly responded to so if the property value is significantly impacted below market value rate or what we feel is a fair rate what would be the assistance that would be provided?
So my my feelings on this um are are slightly different um the only uh awareness I have of property values um that that I have that's factual and evidence-based relates to property values increasing when uh s- when within a proximity of a cannabis retail store I don't believe there's been any information or evidence provided on the impacts of cannabis production sites uh you know my my general thoughts are that by increasing employment and increasing demand to live in the area that it would ultimately increase the value of property in the surrounding region as opposed to decreasing it um but again this is we're it's all hypothetical I I don't know that we can really it you know identify whether or not property values are going to increase or decrease um and I'm certainly not in a position to guarantee property values for Central Elgin um or any residents
I would say the growing of cannabis is so new that there would there would be no statistics whatsoever um because until it's been around a bit um you know it's gonna be very difficult to determine what prop what effect it has on property values
You're correct, Mayor Martin, of anything that we've been reading it there's not a lot of research on it yet but uh speaking to other uh communities certainly there's been challenges of tho- with those in the area so we're quite concerned about that piece uh I just wanted to go back if I could to uh the guarantee that you made Zubin so if you're going to put in writing for us that if any of the neighbors that have well or water quality or quantity issues that you will be or your company Mira and or Country Cannabis will be stepping up to the plate when can we expect to see that in writing to give reassurance to the neighbors? And I say that because we also have a I've received email communication within two weeks after the well drilling activity began at the airport where we were told it was there was no well drilling activity happening but within two weeks one of the neighbors on Quaker Road had issues with their well and they did have to have somebody come out to provide assistance Sorry, could you hear me?
Yes
Okay, thank you
Um, so I think it was just a coincidence um that the neighbor had an issue with their well um and I think when it comes to um the the longer-term nature and outlook of what this project will or will not do for the community uh I think time is going to tell um I I I am happy to verify and confirm and put in writing the fact that we will uh verify and 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 document our water utilization uh we've confirmed that with the city of St. St. Thomas um and as I mentioned before if there's any additional measures that you'd like to put in place um which Central Elgin or St. Thomas would like to dictate uh we are more than happy to comply
Am I to understand that the guarantee is not that you would be stepping up to the plate for neighboring residents that have uh water quality or quantity issues but just that you're going to put in writing you're gonna guarantee that uh somebody will remember to record every time they fill the truck with ten thousand or twenty thousand gallons of of water I can sorry I don't have that right in front of me I can't
Well, I yeah I and and the reason I say that is I've just learned this recently um I I can guarantee uh formulas in a spreadsheet but I cannot guarantee anything to do with nature um and so an impact similar to uh your neighbor's impact on their well I don't want to be held responsible for an act of nature or an impact on the environment for which we have no impact uh or control over um and so we will you know I I've become very familiar with the Ontario Water Act recently uh our consumption is clearly below the guidelines within um and I am I've made it a point um you know the the manager or the lead on countryside who is responsible for this communication uh is as is no longer with Mira um we've taken this issue extremely seriously um this is not the way I want to be spending my time and I'm sure it's not the way any of you want to be spending your time um and I am confirming and reassuring everyone that we will comply with the usage of water um but as I said I cannot control the groundwater and the aquifer um and the quality of the water within um all I can point to is a hydrogeologist's report that indicates the health of the aquifer and and how small of a circle of influence our well is ultimately impacting um as I said before and I'll just repeat it we're less than five percent of the distance of influence to the closest well um and I'm not sure where your property is but I would guess that it's probably closer to double that distance um and so I think the the likelihood of an impact on your water source is next to zero
We're we're speaking on behalf of the entire group so it's not just us my particular well
Uh just one thing that we as a municipality had recommended when uh we met with the city about this Mr. Leach and I met with Mayor Preston and and Mr. Graves and we thought that it would be to your advantage to do a hydrological study of each of the wells so you knew exactly what their flow was prior to doing any wells yourself and that way uh if there was somebody's well was failing before you dug you could not be held accountable but if after you dig it and and a well fails that makes a difference so it was to protect yourself so that nobody could claim that their well was adversely affected if it had been that way before you started so that was why we had recommended that that would be a good idea for your own safety as well as the neighbors um that was obviously not done but that was our our recommendation that's what Mr. Deputy Mayor Marx was referring to as well
If I may, am I still on?
Yes
May I just ask a follow-up question and I just want to make sure I have that number correct in my mind so is it twenty thousand gallons or twenty thousand liters? That you're taking from when you fill a truck?
It's it the the container is ten thousand gallons
Okay, so two fills of that how many times a day would you fill that truck?
That truck I mean right now we're filling it you know less than once a week um when we were utilizing the water uh and again just as a reminder this was trucked in water we were using about one of those containers a day and that was a lot of the times they were half full at the end of the day um it it is a very modest water consumption um half you know I I don't know if you're aware of the water there's these water totes that are twelve hundred and fifty gallons um those were being utilized and we maybe filled them four or five times on most of those days so we're we're significantly below uh the forty-five thousand liters a day that we have requested
I guess we're struggling with um the challenges that we've had up to date and trusting that somebody's going to remember to manually record the water levels um
They said that they're mandated to that that's their their legal requirement is to do so so I I think we pretty well have to trust them to do that because they are required to do that
One of the questions and I I Lloyd, how many people do you have waiting I don't want to keep going
We have another one who's waiting definitely for you to finish after you Michelle because we had told them they could speak next
I was wondering if we could have a tour of the area that would probably give us a better insight as to exactly what's what's there it's hard to tell from the road certainly when there was hemp planted right on Elm Line the neighbors reported that many vehicles were stopping climbing over and taking actually cutting some of the hemp and taking it home with them and and uh so the but it would be beneficial from our perspective to actually be onsite and have a firsthand experience of what exactly is happening onsite and I don't know whether that's an option or not but I wanted to put that out there and then I'll let it go to the next question, thank you
Zubin
I I would be more than happy to host a tour for any resident that's interested in seeing the project and property and meeting our team
Perfect, thank you
Um and just so everyone has my contact information uh my email is Zubin at Mira Cannabis dot com if you send me an email I'll I'd be happy to coordinate uh a visit uh for yourself and and anyone else um in the area
Thank you
Uh Madam Mayor, Joey and Sheri Laduke
Go ahead, Joey and Sheri
Hi, it's Sheri Laduke and I'm on Quaker Road and I have two questions for uh Zubin and the first one is you mentioned that you have a lease I want to know who that's with is it with the city or was it with the previous farmer that was um working that field and you mentioned that you're here for a while so um will that lease be extended after that? And why Theatrist at the airport and not a place where there's no neighbors? Or like the Ford plant there's no neighbors there's six hundred seventy-two acres
Go ahead, so I highly doubt that the Ford company would lease the Ford lands but they want to sell them not lease them but
Um, I I've had a fascination with the St. Thomas Airport since twenty fourteen um I've really wanted to get my private pilot license and we had a plan years ago uh to actually build our second um our second site on the airport property at least this was uh you know very very preliminary plans um the cannabis industry went through a period of flux and ultimately we ended up uh leasing a building uh that's on the other side of St. Thomas um and so you know the the airport property provides a couple unique elements um one is that it's on a already a protected property um that is fairly restricted um and secondly um and this is primarily related to where we're located on the property uh it provides some protection from the road um and from the public in general um and although there is a barbed wire fence that surrounds the entire property which is you know it's outfitted with microfonic cable uh Uh, there are infrared videos, I believe about 100 that surround the entire property. If anyone comes remotely close to the site, there's an immediate response, an alarm sent to Chup Edwards and the uh OPP. Um, and so the site is relatively safe. Both from a a security perspective, but also from a a plant security perspective with regards to pollination or uh having that hardwood forest in front of the the property provides a bit of a a buffer from uh potential from surrounding crops, including hemp. Um, so that was the primary reason that we had selected and and decided to work with the uh airport property. And secondly, the proximity to our processing sites. Um, because we plan on utilizing the processing uh buildings that we have in Saint Thomas, we need to be within a few minutes drive uh to coordinate all the logistics that uh have to take place in transferring a live wet uh plant product.
The other thing she asked about who you leased from, I believe you leased from the city of Saint Thomas who owned the land, do you not?
That that is correct.
Madam Mayor, uh, next question is Steve Harris.
Steve Harris, go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering that during your initial planning, was there any consideration of any of the vacant property in Saint Thomas that would be closer to your facility?
We have, I have been on a perpetual uh review of vacant land uh and buildings in Saint Thomas. Uh, we're we're always kind of looking for uh other opportunities. Um, and this site seemed to fit the bill perfectly for the the reasons I I just mentioned. Um, there, we we have intentions of um of continuing on this property um into the foreseeable future. But I I do not believe there were any other sites that we inspected um in this level of detail.
Currently, there's two 50 acre parcels in the city of Saint Thomas that are currently agricultural.
And so Steve, just just there, there are other regulatory requirements. Um, and, you know, this is not necessarily within the Cannabis Act, but it was something that we had to work with the city of Saint Thomas on um on our first application, um, which obviously um is close to home for you. Um, but the proximity to high density residential neighborhoods has been a concern to Health Canada right from day one. And it has been a cause for uh the rejection of licenses. Um, Health Canada does not state, uh, it's essentially an arbitrary guideline um, which has moved from 800 meters uh down to about 500 meters a couple of years ago. Now it is purely discretionary. Rural properties have always been a bit of an exception, right down to the very first license holder, which uh Peace Naturals, which uh operated out of a old barn um in a rural area um in Northern Ontario. Um, but, you know, there there are really no um no concerns that were similar on any of the plots that we saw around around the airport. Um, and I'm assuming that the plots of land that you're referring to in Saint Thomas are are ones that we had likely looked at for for that purpose or others, and they just didn't fit uh the requirements of Health Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor, um, Michelle Harris.
Michelle.
Thank you. Just a follow up question. Sorry. Can you hear me okay?
There's a lot of echo. Do you have computers on?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, gosh, I almost forgot my question now. Oh, follow up question to what you just said Zubin in regards to Health Canada had concern around high density. Um, so why concern around high density uh versus the the same, the 216 people that signed the petition in the surrounding area of the Saint Thomas Municipal Airport? 216 families? That seems pretty high density to me.
I, um, Michelle, I'm sorry, I I just, I think Health Canada's definition of high density varies quite drastically from yours. Um, I believe what they mean by that is uh uh like suburban type neighborhoods, like um South Orchard Park uh at Almond Centennial, that type of uh residential neighborhood.
So there was two properties that Steve mentioned. Um, one of those, I think, across the road from Valley View perhaps, and the other one on South Edgeworth. Both of those are 59, 56 to 59 acre properties that are zoned agricultural and from our perspective would be very similar. Were those properties considered?
Um, I don't believe so.
Mayor Preston, Mayor Preston may wish to speak to that. Maybe those are designated for another use, but I don't know if Mayor Preston wished to speak to that.
We're certain that each of them are z- are zoned industrial land um that an agriculture use is happening on them, but I do not know who who the leasur is or how long they've leased. Um, but if someone was currently already farming on it, um, then that may be the reason why they weren't offered to anybody else.
The property description states vacant residential, commercial, industrial land owned by a non-farmer with a portion being farmed. One piece of property. It's certainly the 55 acres that are currently on property at the Saint Thomas Municipal Airport would fall into that. The second property has the exact same description.
As Mayor Preston said, though, the lands already may have been leased to a farmer, and those leases are often five or 10 years long, because most farmers, at least in my experience, they like to lease a property for quite a while because they're going to put, you know, things back into the land.
Is the city of Saint Thomas able to provide uh any information in regards to the lease of the Saint Thomas Municipal Airport property uh for farming? Is it a five to 10 year as well? Where is that currently sitting?
Right, but not in my my willhouse. Um, we get the information if it's allowed to be to be given, but uh I thought something I have on the top of my head.
Is that something that you could provide a response to?
I I will re- provide a response. The response may be we can't share that with you.
Okay.
But I will, we will check that and see what is uh from a privacy point of view available, we given out about the lease source of our of property.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have Counselor Kohler next.
Counselor Kohler, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, just wanted to actually thank Zubin for taking the time to come here. Uh, I don't see too many people uh not not having to do this, actually take the time to do it. And I really appreciate his questions because I know even some of us in Saint Thomas Council had some concern when we started talking about the well, knowing that the communication had gone out, that it was going to be trucked in, but certainly appreciate uh getting the information that Zubin has provided. But I I think going back to Lloyd uh explaining the zoning of of the property. Uh, if I was a neighboring uh person to this property, I probably really hope that Zubin was successful and and stayed there for a long time because as industrial land is becoming uh short in in our area here, um, I I might rather have that or operation there than what could actually build there.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Perrin, is there anyone else?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Corey Sullivan.
Corey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just want to uh reiterate the fact that uh we do also, although some of our discussions have been a little heated. We appreciate Zubin taking the time and everybody else taking the time to talk to us. One of Mike's questions is a follow up question to um your projected growth. Like you, you indicated that you leased uh some of your buildings. Um, and so, and your plan is to uh have a long term tendency or a lease here or within the city of Saint Thomas and surrounding area. So that being said, how long do you figure your current infrastructure will um last you? Now, or are you going to have to, like, when are you going to have to expand based on your projected growth? As far as manufacturing?
Thanks, Corey. Um, it's a challenging question to address. Um, I I'd like to obviously see it grow quite rapidly and have a short timeframe. Um, we've recently, you know, this has been a long journey for us just to get to this point. Uh, we're six years into the business and just last, the last two months, we've received approval to actually start selling our product. Um, we've designed and built uh Sparling Road, which was our first site um at a considerable expense, um probably the highest cost of any facility in Canada on a per square foot basis. Um, and I'm I'm removing uh the mistakes we made during during that process. Uh, but we've invested close to $20 million into Sparling Road. Um, we plan on, and part of that expense and the reason we're at the top end of the industry is this was not a short term opportunity we were looking to capture. Um, as I said before, So Young and I are very much committed to to running this business uh for our entire careers. Um, and so when it comes to the construction development of these sites, we're looking at this as a 10 year plus venture. Um, our infrastructure at Sparling Road is designed to last uh in the current form for about 20 years. Um, the infrastructure that is on site at the airport, which, you know, has to date, uh, we've incurred about four to $5 million uh in hard costs for that project. Um, provided there's no change to the activities being processing, drying, et cetera. Um, that will likely also be a a longer term investment. Uh, where we end up deploying a lot more capital over the next four or five years as the business starts to grow and and sales continue to hopefully develop uh is the expansion and fit out of Harwell Road, which is our third site. Uh, it's a processing uh site that we are uh hoping to get licensed in anticipation of the harvest for countryside. Um, so these projects all tie in together. Um, one relies on the other. Um, but we we intend to run this for uh decades to come. Okay, thank you very much.
And I I do appreciate Zubin that you have been available to us. We, this has really helped us um as a council, and I'm sure the city of Saint Thomas has given us a chance to actually speak with you. I think that's important and to give these citizens a chance to ask their their questions. Um, is there, Mr. Perrin, is there any citizen that hasn't asked a question that is in line?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, and I have Counselor Peters next.
Thank you, Counselor Peters. Go ahead.
Thanks very much, Your Worships. Uh, my question is regarding the water taking. Uh, if there's concern being expressed all around and some concern over trust as to how much is being taken, why can a meter not be placed on that well so that everyone is satisfied? The city's satisfied, Central Logan's satisfied, neighbors are satisfied, and ultimately the Ministry of Environment, because the moment that site, if that site were to exceed 50,000 liters a day, then a permit to take water is going to be required. So why can a meter not be placed on that well? Thank you.
Zubin, would you respond to that?
Sure. Um, we we simply complied with the requests. I believe it was the city engineer from Saint Thomas. Um, and we received the report uh that addressed the request directly from the city engineer. Um, in terms of incorporating a a meter to read the water that's taken out, I'm I'm happy to look into that. I don't know uh the mechanism, but we'll uh look to have one installed and available to the city.
Should be not a problem considering the city has water meters everywhere.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And Mr. Perrin, are there any other citizens or any other members of county either council that wish to speak?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have a hand up uh again for Michelle Harris. I'm not sure if she just did it lower it the last time or she has another question.
Michelle, do you have a final question?
I like how you worded that.
Well, I, I, we've been in, you know, an hour and a half, and I think Zubin's been very good about listening to this, and we have heard from the same people many times. So I, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And you do have his email address now too, so you can address specific questions to him as well if you have concerns. I agree that there are other people who want to hear the answers, not just you, but go ahead.
Just the final question that I have is in regards to the tour. Um, and thank you for that opportunity because that's, I think, going to be very helpful. Um, I was wondering if Central Alvin Council members would also like to tour with us.
Council members? Yes, several of us definitely would like to, yes.
And I would like to extend our thanks.
I was gonna say, some of the city council might very well want to have a tour as well if they haven't.
Yeah, my apologies for not extending that. I understood that some of them had been on site, so I thought perhaps that had occurred, so.
It may have, I don't know.
So yes, we do appreciate you taking the time and it has been helpful. Uh, we still have some some things that we want to have further conversation with, but we appreciate the email and certainly the opportunity to tour, so we'll be looking forward to setting that up soon.
Likewise, thank you.
And thank you Zubin and and all of City Council for all of you who are here and and all of our council. I think this has been enlightening to all of us as well as to the citizens who had concerns. So I very much appreciate it Zubin that you were able to come in and and answer these questions today. So I'm going to call it close to this particular point in the meeting. Uh, we we have some other things that we are going to discuss with the city of Saint Thomas. So um, the rest of you, that this will be the conclusion of this one, and so Zubin, you do not have to stay any longer and neither do the other citizens unless they wish to to listen. I mean, they can still be participants. Um, and it is live, we are live streaming on our Facebook page, so there are others who can watch it as well. They just can't participate. So I'm going to move on to the next one. Um, the Shaw Side Development Transportation Review.
Ma- Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a point of process, uh unfortunately, I'm not able to remove people and put them back into the attendees. Uh, so those ones like Ms. Harris that have spoke and the others, I'm gonna have to remove from the meeting just so they um they can view the meeting uh in uh in Facebook streaming.
Yep, happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Perrin, for telling us that. Okay, Shaw Side Development Transportation Review, who's going to lead this?
Well, if you, if you'd like, I'll I'll start and then maybe throw it over to the city manager or engineer.
Thanks.
Request was made during the public meeting. Um, certainly a transportation study was done by the original developer of Shaw Side and uh met the qualifications of the day, but as the new zoning application has come forward at our public meeting, there's a great request that the, there be at least a peer review or redo on the traffic study. Um, and it includes, and it would, and hoping it would include um further out from Shaw Side than just inside in the sub, the traffic and the study in there. And so we're at the point now where that's gone out, I believe, for a uh for a peer reviewer, looking for someone to do that review. I'll uh throw it over to Mr. Graves to make sure I haven't misspoke.
Wendell, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and to Mayor Martin and council and those.
We can't hear you very well, Wendell. You're quiet.
Hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
So, the first thing, I, I just want to take one and a half a step backwards to say that we're still very much in the planning process. There's been no decisions made one way or the other in terms of the current application. So, we're still in the fact-finding mode, and as the mayor mentioned, there's additional information being captured. And so, we are, there, there's a transportation review underway. On our call, I do have the manager, one of our managers from an engineering, our engineering group, and I've asked him to join us just to give us an update in terms of, of what we can expect relative to that, that study, where it's at, and when we might see it come back.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship. Yeah, so, we contracted company, Stan Tech Consulting, to undertake a peer review. I just got the peer review actually last week, and just going through the, just going through my review of the results from that. The peer review that's been undertaken is a technical review of how the original traffic impact studies were conducted and whether or not they're conducted in a proper manner technically. And so, that's the overall, the oversight which is happening right now with the peer review. And they've just reading through, and now they made a few recommendations, things that could possibly be addressed there. And so, again, reviewing that still right now and deciding on next steps of how to move forward with that.
And I'm assuming this whole concept came out with the idea of changing, you know, having a change in use rather than single houses or golf course rather to the apartment buildings and, and obviously a lot more cars. And I'm assuming that's where this is stemming from. Am I wrong?
You are correct in that, in that the, with the, with phases of the subdivision, as they moved along, they did identify these blocks as high-density blocks. And so, they've updated the report as they've gone along, as they've gone along to account for the traffic from those high-density blocks.
And I'm aware that this affects Central Elgin because, of course, Southdole Line, some of them will be emptying out that way and such. So, it, it does affect our roads as well. So, I think that's why we were jointly discussing this tonight, and I don't know if any members of council have any specific questions. Anyone? I guess we'll look forward to, you're, you're, at the moment, as you say, you're just making sure it was conducted correctly and through this second opinion audit. And then will there be some new studies done, or you don't know yet until you have really reviewed this?
Right. To Your Worship, as, as I'm reviewing it, they made some, they're, made some recommendation of things that they could possibly adjust or just get clarification on. And maybe some of those clarifications could result in further analysis. So, like I said, just going through it right now, we, we pass this back to the developer for them to, and their engineer to give a response. It could further warrant some additional analysis and maybe an addendum to the report.
Okay. Well, I, I did listen in on the public meeting that you had for this area because, partly because we were going to have a public meeting shortly thereafter. I was going to have to chair, and I wanted to see how it was done. But I was intrigued with the, the report that the group had given, and I didn't know if city council were still fully in favor of this high-density area, or if there have been any decisions made on that.
Well, if I could, if I can speak to that, the planning meeting, there'd be no decisions made till the full plan comes to us.
Right.
You know, many of the residents and many of council asked for further information. As further information comes to council on this zoning change, at some point in time, a decision will have to be made. But we're not, we're not anywhere close to having all of the information that we need in order to even have that discussion. We, we wanted to have the public meeting, and certainly through the public meeting, heard a lot from the, from the citizens of Shaw Valley and nearby. And with that, said, well, lots of questions, not as many answers. Let's go get the questions answered and get it back to council. We're not expecting this to come back to council for a little while yet with for example, the traffic study and the housing study, some of the other stuff that's being looked at, or at least into at least next month and likely much longer than that.
Thank you, Mayor Joe. I, I appreciate that. I just was, we hadn't heard anything, so I was just curious if you had proceeded at all yet. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from St. Thomas City Council have any comments or questions?
Well, I, I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Your Worship, you stayed on to watch how we, how we ran a public meeting. How did we do?
You did very well, Joe. I was amazed at how calm and you remained extremely, very polite and calm. I was impressed because you had some interesting characters phoning in.
I had my supply of coffee. That made a difference.
I don't drink coffee, Joe, so I have to do it without. Okay, is there anything else we need to say on the Shaw side? We know where it's, where it's at now. How about the regional transit? And Joe, I'm gonna turn this one over to you because you're the one who got the grant.
Well, we're not there yet. We, we, we received the transportation grant for the rest of our in-city transit.
Ah, okay.
Which will be incredibly good now. We, both the province and the feds were incredibly kind as to what the problem is to be able to move forward in St. Thomas. And those plans and, and project, of total project going forward can now start. Of course, you don't go shopping for anything until you actually have the money in hand, and the, and that happened last week. And so, we will do that. So, we see some route changes coming. We see some ways of running our transit different. But separate from that, the regional transportation that we've asked for from the province is still in their hands. And I, we do expect to hear back to them, a or nay, at, at some point in the near future. We'd love to be able to do the whole thing at once, but we'll, we'll continue to do what we know we can do and move forward on it. Look, and some other regional transportation system started up last week, and we'd love to have that St. Thomas to Port Stanley, St. Thomas to Elmer, St. Thomas to London regional transportation system up and running as soon as we can possibly do it. We know it's, that the people here, it's the most talked-about piece of transportation we can get. So, Mayor Martin, I, I know you've supported it and helped represent it and, and will continue to. So, let's all keep our fingers, fingers crossed on, on the provincial pilot project for regional transportation.
Well, that's great, Joe. I, I just, I didn't realize it was entirely city one that you had got, but we have talked, I have talked with you before about possibly reaching out into Central Elgin and Southold with your city buses in the Centennial, Eastwood area, or up in the Lynnhurst Village area. And just wondered if there's any way we can be, that that could be studied or looked at, or to see what the costs are so that we could get the proper grants, et cetera, to assist with that. I don't know, but that's something, I really think it's time we got, you know, those people think, they think they live in St. Thomas, most of them, and they don't understand why they don't have bus access.
Right. And, and we have talked about that, and even during our original planning for this, we talked a lot about that. I think you and I and, and, and Southold will also have to have those conversations going forward as to if we do it, how is it managed? Obviously, with the regional transportation we're driving through, both your community and Southold is part of the regional, and that might be even easier to do. But let's keep this conversation going about how St. Thomas can best do what's right for St. Thomas, and even those who think they live in St. Thomas, they may be living in a neighboring community.
Well, it's interesting. I know every time I drive down Wellington now toward Centennial, and I realize, I see colder, and I know you're in Central Elgin, but on the north side of me, you're in St. Thomas. So, I don't know if you have any buses out that far, but anyway, okay, we very much appreciate that, and I, I certainly would like to continue that conversation. I think that's important. I, that's something I'd like to see because we're almost halfway through our mandate, and I'd like to see that looked at before we're finished, if we can.
That's a, that's a goal of mine, too, to finish all of this during this mandate. And, and this council's been exceptionally helpful to make it happen, so we'll continue to do that, too.
Thank you. Okay, and I guess, is there anything else anyone wants to say on this transit?
Madam Mayor, Counselor Peters has his hand up.
Certainly, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you very much, Your Worships. A couple, a couple comments on this one. One is, I happened to take a, a detour down Colloden Road through Oxford County last week, and the Oxford regional system is up and running. So, I took a point to not have to speed and followed the bus down Colloden Road. And it was interesting to see that two people got off the bus in Colloden and one person got off the bus in Brownsville. So, I'm assuming that that was coming from probably Woodstock. So, there was people using that new rural system in Oxford County. I just, just sort of a sidebar, but, but back to the interminis, intermunicipal transit. Like, I always go back to old Mr. Vermeer used to walk across the St. George Street Bridge so he could get on paratransit to get to his doctor's appointment in St. Thomas. And I would just, I guess, encourage staff to, to let's take a look at this from an intermunicipal perspective of can we make this, can we make this happen? Because I am sure with that donut that exists around St. Thomas, particularly on the paratransit file, maybe not so much on the conventional transit, but paratransit, I'm, I'm guessing there would be a lot of people interested in using it. And I'd just like to see that agenda advanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I, I, that came up an issue at the last, our last council, previous council. There was a woman who lived in the house next to the city of St. Thomas down on St. George, and she needed paratransit, but she couldn't get it. She had to call a taxi because she couldn't walk into the city like one, she couldn't walk that far because she couldn't walk. So, and we tried very hard to see if we could get paratransit to her, but at that time, there was no way of accomplishing it. So, I agree, that's one thing, even the paratransit would be a great asset. Anyone else have a comment or question? Okay, if not, then we'll go to the third item, which is the Airport Working Group to Explore Joint Business Park Initiative. Who's going to initiate that?
Well, I'll start. I think I have a couple councillors that will want to do it, too. But with the discussion we just had, Mr. Baron pointed out that the, that the airport itself is zoned, zoned, or, or.
It's actually Mr. Leach that did, but.
Nobody did. And, and that it's industrial land. And I know that in the past, before my time on council, these two councils did have a fair bit of discussion about being able to use the airport lands as, as economic lands. And, and as Mr., as Counselor Kohler said during the last presentation, we, we all will have a need for more industrial land at, at, at some time, hopefully in the near future, not in the far future, but in the near future. So, I would love us to be having these conversations before such time as there's a client knocking at the door looking for the availability, the R2 municipalities to have worked out how might that work. And we now know that there would be certainly public meetings and all of that that would, that would come after that. But let's, let's have that discussion. How, how can we get to the point where, not that it's done, but that at least it's talked about?
Yes, and it was the last council, as you say. They did talk about it. We met, we talked about water access and sewage access, et cetera, for those lands and, and how we would, you know, share those. Because you, you do pay taxes on that land to Central Elgin, et cetera. So, I mean, we do have to work together on that, and that is very important. And certainly, obviously, as we know, neighbors have concerns. Comments from others? You said there were two other members of your council probably like to speak?
Madam Mayor, Counselor Kohler has his hand up.
Go ahead, Counselor Kohler. Jeff?
Thanks, Your Worship. This is something that I think has been on my mind ever since I've been on council. I think not only with Central Elgin, but maybe Southold, I think, especially the way lands are going. And I'd like to see us if we could enter into where it would be a joint municipal-run park. Not something that, you know, just where we pay taxes and we collect leased land, but if, if, if it could actually be a joint area where we could market it together and partner in it over the long haul and, and share in the tax revenue that comes from it, whatever may come of it. And then, in that way, when you look at it in the future, Central Elgin, or as well as St. Thomas, on a collaborative type of effort there.
If we were going to do that, probably would not, the logical thing would be to set up a joint committee with, say, some members of Central Elgin Council and some members of city council to look at options, or do you think that's premature?
No, I, I, I think that's a great idea. Being part of the eastside development process during that time, I think that process worked very well.
Is there someone else from city council who'd like to speak as well?
Let's see, Counselor Peters has his hand up.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks very much, Your Worships. Just to echo some of the comments that have been made, I would be extremely supportive of what we can do jointly from an economic development perspective. I, I, I see that airport as, as a potential gem for us, and, you know, perhaps we need to think a little big, bigger, and, and think, and looking at, you know, are there things, if the runway needs to be expanded, you know, can we be looking at what we could do to Yarmouth Center Road to make that become a reality? I think the other, because that whole eastern part of the boundary between St. Thomas and Central Elgin, I think also has a lot of potential. And I would hope that part of this discussion could be, how do we deal with the, the Ministry of Transportation easement that exists on the lands east of the bypass that extend and kind of restrict potential on a lot of lands all the way through to, to Ilmer? And, you know, if we were gonna look at the airport and potential of, of, you know, future, future employment lands for you in, in, in Central Elgin, how do we get that easement off the books? Because I don't believe that the Ministry of Transport is ever going to expand Highway 3 to the east. But, you know, I'd be interested in, in seeing how we can work together, and let's resurrect what, what was done in the past, and maybe we can undo some of the things that made it fall off the rails. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, my understanding was that the county decided to no longer to allow that easement to be sold, to be released. That was my understanding that, that they weren't going to continue doing the study, because that has been, that has come up before us several times. And I thought we had agreed to abandon it. That was my understanding. And Mr. Deputy Mayor Marx agrees that we did abandon it. So, that should, should be distributed. It should be able to be used. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I believe that's probably been a victim of COVID. Probably be a good question for Minister Pete, or Minister York to get an update on that. But if we're looking big picture, I think we need to include the county of Elgin and their economic development. I know there's several members of county councils would be interested in this, so. But I certainly fully support this direction.
Well, great. So, we've heard from, we've heard both sides say, let's do it. Let's at least put together a, a small committee to, 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 hey, we're not talking, we're not getting anywhere. So, let's sit down and see if we can work out what the parameters might be and how we might be wanting to go there. I know that the city of St. Thomas already has a liaison committee that, that has been dealing with Southwold on a couple of, a couple of issues. I'm not certain if this shouldn't be exactly the same committee or not, but maybe we want to go away and come back with who might be on it, or do you want to try and just make some suggestions today and say, let's go?
Okay, what, the will of, yeah, Tom?
I would have a great interest in this, Joe.
Well, you and me, Tom, uh, what, where are we going?
Uh, well, how big a committee do you think you'd want? Say two or three from each council or?
I would think that's probably fine, two or three from each council. And, um, you know, somebody just did mention the county and their economic development people and, and I, uh, our economic development people may want to have a role from time to time in this too. And so I, I think with, and, and, you know, whether it's also our administrators so that we can stay on, on track procedurally, because some of these things, we don't want to get ourselves in trouble, um, having meetings that are not real meetings. So.
Well, you're, you're right, Joe. And every, every meeting we have, we have staff that are ex officio on all of them. So certainly, uh, Mr. Perrin, who's in charge of our assets, uh, would be a logical person. Mr. Leach here from Central Elgin for sure. There may be others. And you may well have certain people that you would definitely want on it. Should we, Mr. Leach, should we, I, I can't, my problem right now is I've got two council members I can't see at all, three council members I can't see. And I haven't heard from them because there are three in the room here with me, but, um.
Well, I saw Counselor Clark light up.
Yes, I did too. And he's very welcome to speak. Go ahead, Gary.
I was just going to let you know that I'd be willing to sit on any of, if you needed members.
Okay. Well, again, I don't want it to be all of council, but I really, I really do want as much participating as I can. So Mayor Martin and, and I maybe work this out. If I end up with three people who want to help, she's going to have to match up with three people who want to help.
Yeah. Just Mr. Leach has suggested that our next council meeting is the 24th of August. And at that point, we will officially appoint the members. So all we could do, maybe today we can, and decide, do we want two? Do we want three? What would your preference be? Uh, we don't want four because that makes a majority of our council constitutes a meeting.
Right. So, so three or less. I'm okay with three. If that's the case, let's start it off there and see how it goes.
Okay. So we'll each appoint three. Pardon me?
I'm getting volunteers. So, yeah.
Well, you can deal with your volunteers and you can set up your official members of the committee and Central Elgin will set up theirs. I assume as mayors, we will both sit on it and then we'll have two others from each council that are interested in this and will determine what staff. And we certainly can speak to the county once this, maybe we should have a meeting of ourselves and determine how we want the county to be involved and who from the county we want to have involved in it. Because I, I agree that the county should, you know, would have a role in this. Does that meet with your approval, Mayor Preston, if we choose our three and, and have them approved at our next official meeting?
That's it. And then we do it that and go with that group and staff and then decide what, whether, whether it's county council or who else might go into with it. So let's do that.
Okay.
Until September, first week of September.
Okay.
Anybody there till after that.
Okay. So we could set up a meeting possibly later in September for this committee?
I'm thinking that's appropriate. Yes.
Okay. I will have Mr. Leach and Mr. Graves correspond and find a suitable date.
Good.
Is there anything else about this joint initiative? I very much appreciate the city being willing to meet with us today. I know the cannabis one was a, a tough one. We've had a lot of concerns with that and I'm, it was very good of Zubin to be here and to answer the questions. We were hoping originally he'd just answer all the questions that were in the original letter because certain though those answers, as you know, have changed. So, but this worked out quite well. And hopefully, most of those citizens were able to watch it if they weren't able to even participate because we didn't have that many asking questions. We had the same ones asking questions, but I know of a few that said they weren't going to ask questions because they'd be rude. So I said, I encourage them to ask, have Michelle or Steve Harris ask the questions for them.
That's, that's great. I still see a couple of hands up from Counselor Clark and Counselor Peters. Are you, I think, wanting to ask questions?
Go ahead, Counselor Peters or Clark.
Peters here. It, it, it's actually, it's actually a topic of new business, but it, but it's one that I believe concerns both of our municipalities. And, and that is the potential for a new high school. We know that Arthur Voughton is, was on the chopping block and the numbers at Central Elgin are plummeting and the school board had been on at least three years ago on the next exploratory, exploratory, uh, mission to look for a new school, uh, new site for a, um, a high school. And having done some research at the time, they're looking for 20 to 25 acres of land. Well, 25, 20 to 25 acres of land in St. Thomas is going to be extremely difficult to find. I also know that the school board had their eyes set on a parcel of land in Central Elgin that is, is zoned agricultural, but, um, could meet a lot of needs. It could meet, uh, the needs from the school board's perspective. I also know from some research that I did at the time that the site was actually serviceable from the city. And that is, this is the northwest corner of Ron McNeil and Highbury Ave. And, uh, I, I just wonder if at some point, whether it's this joint committee or we instruct our staff, staffs to have some discussion with the school board to see, because I, you know, I see Fiona's finally going to get her school in Belmont. You know, that's been on the books since goodness knows when, but.
14 years.
14 years. Okay.
That I've been involved in it.
So at, at, at some point, the high school question is going to come up. Whether we could accommodate it in the city of St. Thomas, I don't know. But I'll tell you that that's, that site in Central Elgin is attractive and it would be attractive to, I think, both city people and our, our, our rural colleagues as well. So anyway, I just, it's, it's one that the announcement of Belmont sort of struck me that, okay, so maybe some of this old log jam is going to start to get opened up. And I would rather see us be out in front that if there's an opportunity to see a new high school built, let's get it done. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, I would suggest probably because that is new business, that should we have the staff talk about, like, Mr. Leach, would you correspond with Mr. Graves and, and, and see if we need, or, and our planning staff, which is joint? And see if that was a feasible concept and whether we should be pushing that or whatever. Does that make sense, Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, and we can also, um, we have some contacts with, um, the Thames Valley School Board, particularly as a result of the Belmont work. Just to see what the status is of, um, the school, high school, secondary school site search.
Okay. So we will, we will proceed forward looking at that, Steve, so it's not just dropped.
And I think, I think our joint committee can also have that discussion and that will remind us also.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, Counselor Fair has his hand up.
Counselor Fair, go ahead.
As the, as the donut around St. Thomas, I'd be interested in the industrial and also the high school.
Thank you. We will be making that choice at our next meeting, Counselor Fair. So you can certainly express your interest at that point as well. Is there anyone else that has anything they wish to say at this point? If not, we will, do we need a motion to adjourn? Yeah, we will need a motion to adjourn the meeting. So I'm going to ask, Diane, I just want to thank all of you. This has been a good experience. As tough as these Zoom meetings, et cetera, are, and they drive me crazy. I'm thankful to see a few people in the room with me. I'm not a, I'd much rather talk to you face to face. But anyway, I really appreciate all of you doing this and, and coming in and, and we'll, we may, you know, once we get this committee going, then we'll maybe have more meetings together as well. So I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Wynn, that the special meeting of council held jointly with the city of St. Thomas dated Wednesday, August the 12th, 2020, be adjourned at 7:14 PM.
Thank you. Now, does, who all needs to vote? Just our council? Because we called the, the, we called the meeting. So I'm going to have her call off the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krevis?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marx?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
She's nodding her head.
She's there. I can see her.
Counselor Rowe?
Just a sec. I want to answer to Counselor Wynn. It's my first time. Yes. Thank you.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And thank all of you. So.
Very much. See y'all later.
We'll talk to you later.
Thank you.